Planning permission WA 2019 0067, land south of Davies Sights Charterhouse. And I would ask the officers to update on this please.
Thank you Chair. A statement has been circulated to members. I'd just like to make a short statement in relation to this item. Due to the recent consultation response from Natural England requiring mitigation measures which have not been able to be properly considered and agreed with the applicant in time for this committee, the appropriate assessment carried out by the authority under the habitat regulations is incomplete and consequently the committee would be currently unable to determine this application. Therefore I respectfully request this matter is deferred from this committee agenda and brought back at the earliest opportunity for members' consideration once the appropriate assessment has been undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hyman.
May I move that the item may one be deferred Chair?
Thank you. Do I have a second please? councillor Dinas, so members the recommendation is that this item be deferred. All those in favour please.
I think that's carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Apologies to anybody in the public gallery that's turned up to listen to that debate, but these things do happen unfortunately. So we move on to, I don't know if any of you want to leave at this point or whether you're happy to stay on, yes, okay, thank you.
May I just ask a question? Can you just let us know when that appropriate assessment will take place and also why Natural England took till, was it five o'clock this afternoon to let us know, just because I've not experienced that before?
Paul.
Yes, just going back on that, we actually received Natural England's response on the 8th of April. We shared that with the applicant on the 9th of April. We had then a revised proposal for conditions from the applicant which we then shared with Natural England on the 10th of April and we've not had that response. So it's the 10th of April as opposed to the 8th.
And your question regarding the timing was in their hands, thank you. Right, so we move on to the second item of business this evening which is application for planning permission, reference WA 2018 2263, West Cranley Nurseries, Oldford Road, Cranley, GU68NQ. And I would invite Matthew to introduce this application, thank you.
Hello, so WA 2018 2263, the West Cranley Nurseries Reserve Matter Application. I just firstly want to update, highlight the update sheet that was circulated. Just going through the points in turn, today we ask that we are determining the reserve matters part of this application today and the discharge of conditions 1457, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 22, 26, 14, 41, remained under the scheme of delegation for planning officers. Just going on to that, on the update sheet, condition 5 was updated to marry up with the plans correctly. And also on the committee report that may be in circulation, just checking now, there were a few omissions or some errors. The first bit was that the consultation responses were not on the report, they are in the update sheet, they are now online on, in ILAP. The comments were on the planning portal and on the Waverley website from the very beginning. Also in the report, there's an error where it says that the parking provision is 167 spaces. That's incorrect, the submission, the spaces provided are 173 spaces and that is in accordance with requirements. And the final bit is on page 65 in the report, there is a numerical error in the summing up saying 67 dwellings, it's not, it's the 73 dwellings as it will be very clear in the body of the report and in this presentation. So apologies for those errors but they've now been rectified, they're online and on ILAP. So on to the application, so this is details pursuant to the outline permission granted under WA 2016 2207. This is for 73 dwellings as part of phase one of the development and this is with the associated car parking landscaping pursuant to the conditions mentioned and a statement of conformity for the environmental statement that's been provided. The area in red is phase one of the development for the 73 units. To the left of that are the subsequent phases, so phase two and three, and to the right of the site is the parkland provision from the wider application. Here's a slightly more detailed master plan of the site, once again it's the site in the middle we're discussing today. There is still an illustrative layout for phases two and three on the left. That's a photo of the site. So just going through the planning history, back in 1975 there was an application for a glass house, that was refused. More recently in 2015, the 1569 application, that was for 265 dwellings, that was refused, that was for reasons of citing its impact on the openness of the area and I believe a difficulty in rectifying or resolving a legal agreement for the affordable housing provision of the site. Needless to say in 2016, an application came in for the 265 units and that was approved and given full permission. Last year, a reserve matters application for the 67 dwellings was approved pursuant to the conditions 1457, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 22, 26, 14, 41, they're pursuant along with today's application also. This is a master plan of the site, just showing the layout of the units here. I just want to highlight what's changed now from, with this application from the previous one. The alternative scheme largely mirrors the 0682 scheme for 67 units. Some of the larger three and four bed market homes have been replaced with two bed homes and the agent and the applicant suggests that this is in response to market demand. However, it's important to note that the overall provision of affordable housing has gone up. They're now supplying 16 affordable housing units, previously they were supplying 14, so it's gone up from 21% to 22% overall. There's also three homes being gifted to the North Park Trust and I believe the rental income from those units will be used to help maintain the park. It's just a table illustrating it, so if we just look down to where the three bed houses are, sorry, where the two bed houses are, originally six were being set aside for affordable housing, now 80 units are being set aside for affordable housing. Just to be a little bit more clear here, there's, the yellow units, there's no change there, the red units are the ones that are being downsized, so they're going towards the more two units, two bedroom units, and the units in blue are an addition. So it hasn't changed, the electrical charging points hasn't changed, the refuse strategy remains the same as the previous application, the public footpath along the southern boundary remains the same and the large spread of affordable housing throughout the site has remained the same along with the drainage strategy. I'm not sure how easy this is to see here, but this is just an attempt to show you the street scene. I don't really have a laser pointer here but this is the street scene going from the north of the site, oh yeah, like this, so going from the north of the site across, left to right, this is sections one and two, sections three and four is going right away the cross from left to right of the scheme, going down for street scene four, going back to the original picture, this is going from north to south to the Oldford Road side of the site, street scene, whoops, sorry, street scene five, again going north to south but a little bit to the right again, and then finally we've got the final section going to the east of the site, going north to south on the other side there. Heights and Massing, it's a two storey, it's two stories throughout the scheme, the garages are a single story. I believe there are previous concerns about being two and a half metre schemes being, two and a half metre heights being sort of inappropriate for the areas, that's been brought down. Two and a half storey dwelling, sorry that should be, and that's been brought down to two stories in accordance with what was asked for. Housing mix, the light green units are the five bedroom units, the yellow ones the four bedrooms, the pink units are three bedrooms, orange two bedrooms and the purple, so to the west of the site, the purple units are the one and two beds and the green ones are two bedroom units as well. All of the units comply with national space standards, so that includes the overall, for the overall size of the units and also bedrooms, so seven and a half metre squared for the single unit bedrooms and eleven and a half metre squared for the two bedroom units. Affordable layout, it's spread across the site, stayed largely the same, the private units are in blue, the shared ownership units are in yellow, affordable rent in purple and the units gifted to the North Park Trust are in green. I'm just going to give you a rundown of the house types now, these are the two and three bedroom units, we have the floor plan there and the CGI next to it, below are the larger four bedroom units. Again, the four and five bedroom units here, and finally the apartments, and these are to the west of the site. Parking provision, again going back to the up sheet, date sheet, they're supplying 173 units which is in excess of what was required in policy, so the one bedrooms, there's one space for every one bedroom, two for every two bedroom, three bed units, four and five, there's two and a half spaces for every three, four or five bedroom unit, so 173 in total. Now coming to the emergency access, again this mirrors the 0682 scheme initially, the, you have access to the scheme from the Oldford Road and it sweeps around as you can see in the, in the thick red line, there is also a backup emergency access following the footpath to the bottom of the site, whoops, sorry. And yeah, as I said, this was agreed at the planning committee on the 28th of November in 2018. The refuse, the refuse strategy remains the same from the previous application, the green line shows the movement of the, of the refuse lorry, the blue ball with the red tail to it represents residents where they put out their bins and the purple areas represents where the refuse lorry backs up to collect the bins, so that's, that's stayed the same. So the key points is that the principle of the development was established in the earlier scheme, in your officer's view, there's no overbearing form, loss of light or privacy, and we feel that the layout scale, appearance, landscaping and the parking provision and the level of affordable housing is considered acceptable. Oh, and finally, just, just sort of going forward although this isn't, this is suggesting for phase two and three, the level of affordable housing enshrined in the original 106 is 35% throughout the wider site and from the design and access statement, they intend to maintain that going forward and there are some, there is some parts enshrined in the 106 to show that that will be protected because occupation, more than 80% of the occupation of the open market units cannot occur until the affordable housing provision has been provided, so that's hopefully some safeguard for the later phases. That's it, thank you.
Thank you Matthew. Members. councillor Townsend.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank you Matthew for all of his help today because I've had a few questions. And as previously, I would like to see the informative for the emergency vehicle access included to say that it won't be obstructed as we had on the previous application for 0682 that we haven't included on this application. I am still slightly at a loss why there, an emergency vehicle access is required and why the internal layout doesn't facilitate emergency vehicles. And I would have liked to have seen the Surrey rights of way officer consulted, which they haven't done, they weren't, they were consulted previously but there wasn't any reply and there was some sort of misunderstanding about whether they actually had replied before, so, so I would like definitely to see that informative added on. And also, the, the need for this emergency vehicle access, I would also like to see the, the actual fire service to comment on it as well for the, for the need of this because, to be honest, in my opinion, the internal layout should facilitate emergency vehicles and it shouldn't be reliant on a public footpath 393 to actually be able to have fire vehicles accessing those hammerheads at the bottom of the layout there. I'm also, and I know that I've mentioned this to you as well, on page 51 of the report, it mentions about the levels of the site, and I know I've said this to you but I just want to say it in public because I want it noted that I have not seen that, I know it says that there's a drawing and it's not helpful that we now have several different flood risk assessments and different statements, environmental statements now scattered across several applications and I totally appreciate how hard it is now to manage all of those and my concern is that some details may go slightly, you know, missing. Within that environment, within the environmental statement, it mentions, which is mentioned on the end of, actually on page 61, the statement of conformity with the environmental statement, it mentions about the levels now going up by 400 millimetres, the ground levels going up by 400 millimetres. I know that that comes under condition 40 but I don't want us being, agreeing something by accident that we are saying that we've seen the levels which it's implying at the end of page 51, and I know that I've requested the drawing and we haven't been able to manage to locate it at this particular point, but I just want it noted tonight that we haven't seen the levels as members, we haven't seen those drawings to say what the different levels are, and I'm not agreeing or implying any agreement to the height of 400 millimetres going up on the site just to facilitate non, to facilitate the distribution of the, the earth that needs to be removed. So that's another, going to have to be sorted out under condition 40 but in no way, I'm just making it clear that, that those details have not been received. I'm glad to see that you've commented on the phasing programme as well because obviously we had the phasing details before in the other application and, and it hasn't been brought forward into, into this one as well. The, if you could just go back quickly to the units on the site, the colour coding of the units?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got, are the ones at the bottom there, the ones that are sort of like a limey greeny colour?
Um.
Because we've got two greens, I just want to.
These ones here with the gurta, those are the two bedroom units, that's the yellow.
Okay, lovely.
Sorry, sorry, yeah.
So we've just got two greens in the colour coding, okay.
Sorry, there's a lime green and a darker green, sorry about that.
Yes, thank you, that's, that's all I have to question, so, so if you could just clarify the points on the land raising for members and also on the informative, thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, do you wish to respond to that? I mean, can we, I'm sure we can include the informative.
Yeah, including the informative, it was, it was just to illustrate that is condition 40, we're, we're dealing with the reserve matters today but everything's taken on board and we'll see that, that's dealt with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. councillor follow.
Thank you Chair. First of all, just also pleased to see that there is some sort of safety net to protect that affordable housing as that was the, absolutely the first thing I thought was going to be an issue here. Can I just ask about the shifting of the affordable to different phases? We aren't going to be at the, at any point, obviously we're trying not to clump all the social and affordable housing together in these sorts of things, are we, we're not going to be getting to the situation where we've moved everything to further phases and therefore are forced to do that because there is no other choice. The other thing I would just say to echo councillor Townsend there, if, if there is access enough sufficient for a refuse vehicle, why do we need an emergency access road? I can't imagine why that is. And I suppose the other thing I would just say to, if I'm hopefully able to just effectively ask councillor Townsend a question, was this, was this the application where you were repeatedly requesting the height levels diagram and we never saw it, was that a different one? Thank you.
councillor Townsend, would you like to respond to the question?
Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you.
No, this wasn't that particular one, it was another application but that, once bitten twice shy. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor James.
Thank you Chairman. Could the officers confirm that on page 73, condition 18, that no, when it says no alterations to the roof, on some of them it says to the roof line, that nobody can put in a Velux window and make a bedroom up there under permitted development rights? So that they, if they are two bedroomed, because they've all got very high roof lines like that, so there's all roof space in the roof and I'd want to absolutely be reassured that they can't make a bedroom upstairs in the roof. Thank you Chairman.
That would need that condition changing to include class C as well as class B. So, would you like to see that? You would, wouldn't you?
I, I would Chairman, thank you.
I think that condition 18 could be easily changed to be classes B and C which cover all alterations to the roof, yes. Thank you. councillor Hyman.
Yes, thank you Chairman. In respect of a couple of comments, I think actually that councillor Townsend has covered things very well. I did also myself have a little bit of, little bit of difficulty in understanding which parts of the EIA and assessments I should be looking at and I must admit, you know, it is election time, I didn't have a massive amount of time, I couldn't spend a day on it trying to work it out for myself and I, I'm reminded of the, I think it was the Fulham Football Club case in which, it was probably about 10, 12 years ago, Lord Hoffman said that environmental impact assessment must be a single easily accessible document, it must not be a paper chase is, is what he said. But I myself, if, obviously if the local members are satisfied that the environmental impact assessment is sufficient to cover what they have in front of them here then I'm not going to try to override that, it's, because I simply don't know and I'm sure officers will say that it's to their satisfaction. But I do have concerns still in respect of site levels and drainage for this site. But apart from that Chairman, not a great deal of difference from previously, so I'm quite happy I think, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Dinas.
Thank you Chair, just a couple of very brief points, really pleased to see space standards set out. Unfortunately with my eyesight, some of the diagrams are a little bit small, I can't even read that from this distance, it'd be really useful if they're going to produce something that we can't actually read which is really useful, we maybe just have it as on a separate piece of paper or whatever. But I'm really, really pleased that, having mentioned it so many times that's, that's come across. Page 50 and it's only a minor point, the paragraph where it talks about the split, that comes to 110%, so we've obviously, that's not quite right because 62.5 and 47.5 is 110. Just the one point I really wanted to make is councillor Townsend I think made a very important point about these levels and I know it's covered within condition 14, I suppose it's a plea for myself that councillor Townsend has actually spoken to before we write off any condition, so we're satisfied that we've actually got the correct information and we're happy as a ward member. So it's my plea that in the papers that you remember when you come to look at that condition, councillor Townsend is contacted, but other than that, I'm, I'm more than happy. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. The space standards are set out in the report as well, you don't, you don't have to rely on your bad eyesight. councillor Goodridge.
Yeah, very briefly Mr Chairman, I thought the report, verbal report today was very helpful in that when I was reading this report, I was looking for the comparisons to the one that we dealt with a few months ago as to the difference in the housing and difference in affordable and all that which he's given us today, but it would have been useful to have had it in the report. I was going to, to comment on the 110% on page 50 but that's already been sorted. The, could we have the slide, oh, the affordable, yes it's up. The, the two extra affordable, are they in the line of the five at the top there? I assume they are. I think we were on the right slide to start with, weren't we?
They're the two beds, so there's two more two beds in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the map.
The two bed units, so there'll be.
Yeah, sorry. They're the blues on there, are they? Yeah, yeah, so they are spread about. Fine, that's all I wanted to check, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
Thank you, just very, very quickly, just as part of condition 40, so will that include the finished floor levels as well within that? Because again, not just the raising of the land, because I just want to be clear that under condition 40 you still have to consult with the lead local flood authority again under that condition because the finished floor level, if it does go up by 400 millimetres and then potentially another 150 millimetres for finished floor levels approximately, that's 550 millimetres and that will have an impact on the, on the drainage strategy obviously. So I just want to make sure that we are, we are covering the level of the actual ground and the finished floor level of the houses as well.
So Mr Chair, it's my understanding that would be included in what we need to do with condition 40.
Good, any further comments? councillor Byman.
Thank you, just general comment about the concerns expressed about the emergency access point. I think if they believe that's what they need then they should be allowed to have that. So many of our estates that we're putting up have a single point of access, so you have a fire or some other problem in the, in the far distance of the site perhaps and no possibility of getting through with the vehicles without, without a bulldozer to clear the vehicles out of the way or whatever the obstruction might be and then you, you lose everything. And I've got development in Bramley where we have exactly that, they have a perfectly good place for emergency access but at the moment it's been required to close it off or at least make it almost impossible for vehicles to get through even though there is a road to it and from it. So I would accept very much that if emergency access, access point is required, it ought to be left in.
Thank you. councillor follows.
Very quickly, if it is required, I think councillor Townsend mentioned here, if it is required, it would be nice to see a comment from the emergency services that it is, just to confirm that that is actually the case if we have these in future.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, that's a well made comment and we will take that away and make sure our tech team do consult emergency services and larger schemes in the future.
Thank you. councillor Hyman, you wish to come back?
Yes, sorry Chairman, can you clarify for me please whether the finished floor levels are still to be agreed? Because if that is the case then I would need to know precisely whether those have been considered in any flood compensation that might be necessary if that were the case. And obviously if that was the case, because we cannot agree EIA development even at the reserve matter stage until all the assessments have been conducted, I didn't think that was the case and I thought I was safe in, in voting in favour of this, but if any further assessments are necessary, we cannot grant consent at this stage because it's EIA development. So could I just have officers confirmation, I might be slightly confused by what councillor Townsend said and I think that might be the case, but, but I'd just like to have absolutely solid assurance that there is no further assessment necessary and, and obviously agreement from any of the statutory consultees, just to satisfy myself, thank you very much.
Thank you. officers.
The finished floor level, there would have been a datum given both at the outline stage that would have identified what that is and therefore the lead flood authority and the EA would have assessed it at that point. Obviously when the applicant comes back and confirms those floor levels, if there's a very significant or any variation from that, that will be reported back to the Environment Agency and they will assess it at that time within the confines of the EA, within the environmental impact assessment. So it has been taken into account.
Right, members are you happy for me to move to the recommendation? Thank you. Which is that subject to conditions 1 to 17 and 19 with amendment.
Which is that subject to conditions 1 to 17 and 19, with amendment to condition 5 and condition 18 to include class C of permitted development set out on the update sheet, and informatives 1 to 14, plus an additional informative 15 regarding obstruction of emergency access, permission be granted. All those in favour, please? Against?
None.
Abstentions?
Two.
Thank you. So that recommendation is passed and permission will be granted. There are no items to consider it in exempt session, so that concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good Easter.